All right, we can, we can hear you very well.
Good, it's a new speaker.
Okay, just get closer to it. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody out to the Planning Commission meeting this evening, March 2nd, 2022. Commissioner Hanson, I'm the current Chair of the Planning Commission. Tonight, we'll start our meeting with an invocation by Commissioner Sheil, and we'll follow that by the leading of the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Tuppo. Commissioner Sheil.
Our Father in Heaven, as we gather this evening for Planning Commission, Washington City, we're thankful for this opportunity to serve the community and to be together as residents. We're thankful for the help that we get from staff and for their dedication and due diligence. We're grateful to be able to communicate with one another and pray that we can do so in a good manner this night, that we'll get along with one another and things will go smooth, and we thank thee for all that thou gives us. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Commissioners. Also want to recognize the attendance of Councilman Henderson. Thank you for joining this evening. Appreciate all of you for coming as well. Item number 1A, I look for a motion to approve the agenda for tonight if there are not any changes that need to be mentioned.
Mr. Commissioner Tuppo, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Sheil, I second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the agenda is set for tonight, as is. Item number 2A, approval of the minutes from February 16th. Does anybody have anything to add to that or questions? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion on that as well.
This Commissioner Bullock can make a motion to approve the minutes from the February 16th.
Mr. Commissioner Tuppo, I second that.
I've got a first and a second, all in favor. Aye, any opposed? Okay. Item number 2A is passed, obviously. Are now as record. Item number 3, any declaration, this is a declaration of abstentions or conflict with any of the items that we have on the agenda from the Commissioners this evening. I do not have any. Doesn't look like there are any. We'll go to item number 4. This is a preliminary plat. It's a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to the City Council for Finley Farms Town Homes Phase 3 preliminary plat. It's located approximately at 4290 South and Weatherby Way. The applicant is STC Holdings. And I'll turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you, Commissioners. The applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary plat for the Finley Farms Town Homes Phase 3 subdivision located at approximately 4,300 South and 600 East. This particular subdivision is proposing 55 units on an area covering 5.26 acres. Zoning designation at this location was recently rezoned to PUD. In the motion for approval, City Council added three conditions, which include adding nine visitor parking stalls throughout the entire project, completion of the amenity to take place prior to 25% of the issuance of Certificate of Occupancies for the given phase, and lastly, build a solid block wall along Weatherby Way. The applicant has incorporated these conditions into the preliminary plat. Three visitor parking stalls have been added to this phase, and the other six stalls will come with the additional two phases. The surrounding zoning is agricultural 20 to the north, planned unit development residential to the east, planned unit development residential to the south, and R18 to the west. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning, request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval with the conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat for the Finley Farms Town Homes Phase 3 subdivision to the City Council based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions. I would just like to point out, condition 13 reflects the visitor parking stalls, the minimum that needs to be there. And then also, the amenities will take place prior to 25% completion of the Certificate of Occupancies and also the six-foot block wall fence that's required. And I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Hi, Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Eldon, this is Commissioner Anderson. So in the conditions, you have, it says a minimum of 13 visitor parking spaces, but you're saying in the motion it said nine. Is that nine additional, or is, like, what's, what's the number? Is it 13 total, or nine total, or?
So 13 is the minimum.
Plus an additional nine, or where does that nine come from? You said City Council had an additional condition for nine?
Just for the whole project. Yeah, for the whole thing.
You want an additional nine in addition to the 13?
Right, so this covers there, and they'll make nine with what was proposed down on the other two phases. That's just.
So total, it'll be?
They were told to add nine total over the whole thing, and they'll show up. I think one or two ended up here, and then they'll.
It'll be 22 total.
Well, no, not, not, we're talking phases one through three. You're only looking at three, phase three. So what they propose in their PUD approval, the council just said we want nine more throughout the project. So we're just, yeah, we'll make sure that all those, yeah, we know that, you know, I can't remember what was, I don't think Eldon and I can remember exactly what it was. We were just supposed to add nine for the whole area.
Nine additional.
Right.
Yeah, three came in this phase, the other six will come in the other.
The additional is what I was wondering.
Just to help you, Commissioners, I took the one, you know, on the 55 units, there will be required 16 total, but these are two-car garages with two-car driveways, so we kind of let them use some of those, you know, as a visitor parking kind of scenario. So they actually have 13, and between 55 units, you know, three scattered at any random time. So I think we're okay with that. And then we'll just make sure that they have the total that the council wanted for the whole project between the two other phases plus this. Does that help you?
While you're looking or thinking for other questions for staff, I'm going to open this up. It's a public hearing. Is there anybody here in the chamber that would like to speak to this item? I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
This Commissioner Bullock can make a motion to close the public hearing.
Sheil, I second.
I've got a first and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor. Aye. Public hearing is now closed. I'll turn the time, Commissioners, back over to you for any questions for staff. And if there are no further questions, I'll look for a motion.
I know we've had this question before on this, but the, the road to the 4290 South, are they only doing half of that? Is there going to be, we kind of had this issue with the last one where they were backing out onto that Weatherby Way. Is this, what, what does this road do in the future?
This is the standard residential road. We're not, any issue, you've got town homes from a
Okay.
development above them. It's going to be the same scenario. It'll all just be.
It's not, it's not going to be a major.
No, it's not a major road. This kind of, you can see it ends and makes a 90. You know, that, in fact, those guys to the north of this, just were in staff developer this morning, bringing us what they're going to be, you'll be seeing this real soon, you know, in the next few months, the project to the north. So they're going to try to work together and get the road all done at the same time.
Okay.
Because part of them are responsible for this, and the other guy's responsible for that.
Right, they're doing half of it.
So they're going to come just together and get it all done, you know, take care of their portions and get the whole thing done, is what we were told this morning, so.
Okay, but yeah, this will just be like, it's not a major connector.
No, it's not.
I'll look for a motion. There's no other questions.
Mr. Sheil, I'd make a motion that we recommend approval of this preliminary plat for the Finley Farms Town Homes Phase 3 subdivision to the City Council based on the two findings and the 14 conditions.
Commissioner Anderson, I second.
Got a first by Commissioner Sheil, I've got a second by Commissioner Anderson. Individual voting, Commissioner Sheil.
Aye.
Tuppo.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm an aye as well. The motion passes unanimously. We'll move that City Council with our recommendation for approval. Item number 5, this is a public hearing as well to consider approval of a conditional use permit, C-22-02, for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, church, new church located at 4251 South Medallion Drive. The applicant is Dennis Patton, and I'll turn the time over to staff for.
Thank you, Commissioners. State to the applicant's request and approval of a CUP to build this new LDS church. Churches are allowed in residential areas through the approval of a conditional use permit. The property is currently zoned single-family residential, 8,000 and 10,000 square foot minimums for the R18 and R110 zoning districts. Also, for the Planning Commissioner's information, the City Council recently approved a height waiver for the steeple portion of the church to be at a maximum height of 71 feet. The new proposed church site is showing a roughly 21,000 square foot building, with showing 270 parking stalls. And let me kind of scroll down. We'll kind of zoom in. Here with the 270 parking stalls, a pavilion area in the southeast corner of the property. The new church building will have an exterior of brick, as you saw in the picture here. Even though this rendering is, of course, in the Wasatch front, you can tell, because we don't have those kind of rolling hills here, especially green. So that's, but that's the exterior will look like, like this, pretty much with a reddish brick tone to it and the white accents of stucco. Steeple is pretty much going to look just like what you see there. It's a standard one they use in all their churches. So there's generous landscaping, as you can see. We've kind of told them to keep the grass down, because that's the new thing we're trying to, isn't that sad when you're living in a dairy, try to tell people to stay away from grass because of the water consumption that it does? So it'll be a lot of shrubs, boulders, trees, crushed, you know, rock as, as a mulch there. And then the area up in that corner, I'll try to get my, if you see where I'm kind of floating around up there in that right, top right-hand corner, that'll be a grass area by the pavilion here. That'll probably be the only place we really have grass on this whole project, so, which is good, keeping it at a minimum. Staff's reviewed the requested proposal and finds it to be in harmony with the surrounding and existing developments, and would be a good addition to the area. While the conditions are met, the project will be an asset to our community. Staff would therefore like to recommend approval of the conditional use permit onto you, the Planning Commission, for this development at this particular proposed site. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve C-22-02. Again, CUPs are your approval or denial, allowing for the new LDS church to be located at approximately 4251 South Medallion Drive. And that's, of course, based on the findings, subject to the conditions that you have in your report. And I'll be more than glad to answer any questions you might have on this proposed CUP.
All right, Commissioners, any questions for Drew? This Commissioner Hanson, Drew, I'm just curious if in history, if we've ever had a situation where a church has come in where it didn't end up where we're talking about? Like, is there opposition at all, is?
No, and to be honest with you, federal laws prohibit, you know, we pretty much have to let them come in in places, you know, so we've, of course, Utah, we're kind of church-friendly in no matter what anyway. But, you know, just speaking for the LDS church, when it makes it here, it's pretty much a done, done, done deal. It's going there. They've, they've already done all of the vesting, all the legwork. By the time they get to this point, it's, it's pretty much made it through the hierarchy and property's already owned. Everything plans are probably pretty much buttoned up by now with, you know, the church building department, et cetera. So at least with the LDS church, when it comes to you at a conditional use permit, I've never seen one change.
Yeah.
I can't say it's never happened, because you never know, but pretty much the history that I've had, 16 years in Washington, have not ever heard of one, either in this city or another city, that didn't end up going at the site when they brought it to this point, so.
I think you, I remember when the city gave a height waiver or asked for a height waiver for, I think it was specifically for churches, right? Why does the steeple need to be that high? Do we know? Like, it doesn't matter, but I'm kind of curious. If we're only giving it to the churches, just curious why we had to do that? Why can't they design a church the lower steeple?
Well, they probably could, but.
We just.
But they don't, yeah.
We just do what they say? I guess that's not the right thing to say.
No, they can ask. I mean, it's just like, but we'd allow any church. It's not, whether it's the LDS church or the Catholic Church or the Baptist, we've, you know, in fact, I don't think they ever built it, but the church that's right across the freeway over here came in to put in a, I think it was a 75 or 80-foot cross that was going to go up, and it, it never came to fruition. You know, I don't know if it's just because cost got so bad or the engineering was too, too difficult for them, but that was passed by the city to put up a big 80-foot cross, you know, it was designed, it was a neat-looking cross too, but, you know, pretty much cities are fine with religious, you know, as long as it doesn't get too outrageous, height-wise.
Yeah.
And so, you know, 70 feet with a, and again, the steeple goes up to a point, it's not like it's a big, you know, like if you had the Cristo saying Rio de Janeiro sitting on top, then you might start thinking, okay, we're, we're kind of worried about that. But if it's fitting, you know, churches are historically, I mean, we, you know, hundreds and hundreds years ago had steeples on them, all of them, if you go, you go back and look at them all, so.
So maybe just to put in a little bit of the legal, our city and no city in the state, in fact, the Constitution disallows any preference for religion in government. And so while Drew's history is the same as mine, I don't recall our city boards or, or commissions or councils denying a height waiver for a church. There is no guarantee that they get it. This, this commission, the City Council, can look at specific circumstances and exercise their legislative authority and decide, you know, in this situation, a height waiver has issues that cause concern, and we may not approve it. But yeah, I just wanted to make sure, we don't, there is no preference for the LDS steeples or any other church of steeples or churches in general. Their, their guarantees and, and rights as to location are more the zone designation, not for the height waiver. The height waiver is, is something that's extra to where they choose to go and the zoning that they can locate within. I think all that said, I, I think it's staff's recommendation that it does get approved, but that, of course, is your decision.
Also, to let you know, they do make these lightning rods, just in case you know. So hey, maybe it's, engineering says it's better if it not, if it makes you sleep better at night, you say, oh yeah, it's a lightning rod, it has to be higher to grab the lightning. I don't know, Commissioners, I'm just.
That makes a lot more sense.
But they, they do, they, those are lightning rods and those, and they time down, and they are, they actually do a good job.
I'll, as our city changes, I just think out 10, 15, 20 years, and you think of things that are open for an issue possibly. I was just curious if there's ever been an issue in the past, but it helps to understand if somebody comes in the future and there's something that's crazy and it's, it meets that height waiver and all that stuff, that we don't have to approve it. You know, if it is some, like the Rio de Janeiro guy that you said, what is it called?
The Cristos is up there.
Yeah. We don't, obviously don't want that, but I was just curious if, yeah.
That one also violates the hillside ordinance too, I think.
I think it does too, yeah.
Somebody 15 or 20 years from now just remembered that I asked these questions, and they're like, oh yeah, Hanson is thinking ahead.
He was thinking about it.
Anyway, that's all I have. I don't have any. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
Can I make this a fun, this is all in fun, but could we create a condition that has a full-court basketball?
Hardwood floor, not carpet?
I will open this up to a public hearing. If there's anybody here in the chamber that would like to speak to this item, please come forward at this time. I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
This Commissioner Bullock can make a motion to close the public hearing.
This Commissioner Tuppo, I second that.
Got a first and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners, any other questions for staff? If not, I look for a motion.
This Commissioner Bullock can make a motion that we recommend the approval of the C-22-02, allowing for the new LDS church to be located at 4251 South Medallion Drive based on the, the four findings and 10 conditions.
This Commissioner Tuppo, I second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bullock, I have a second by Commissioner Tuppo. Individual voting, Commissioner Sheil.
Aye.
Tuppo.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm an aye as well. The motion passes for the conditional use permit. Item number 6, this is a zone change. It's also a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to the City Council. A zone change request, Z-2202, from C2 Service Commercial to C3 Community Commercial, located approximately Merritt Way and Bluff View Drive. The applicant is Greg MacArthur. Turn the time over to staff.
Thank you, Commissioners. The applicant has stated request and approval of the change of zoning of approximately 1.83 acres. The requested change is from the C2 to the C3 zoning designation. The C3 request is for the purpose of increasing the permitted uses at this already commercially zoned property. This particular location has a general plan use designation of regional commercial, which allows for the C3 zoning district. The surrounding zoning to the parcel is open space to the north, which is actually Interstate 15. They don't zone the interstate for some reason, they leave it open space. Also, we have administrative professional to the west, which is actually the city's Parks Department yard, following that up with PUD to the south and C2 to the east. So staff has no concerns with the proposed zone changes outlined. The applicant is in accordance with the general plan land use designation. Therefore, staff would like to recommend that the Planning Commission recommend approval of Z-22-02 for the zone change request from C2 to C3. That would be on to the City Council, and based on the findings in your report, I'll be glad to answer any questions on this. And you all know where this is. If you've been out to that RV park, it's out there, it's right next to it, to the west of it.
All right, Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Do you, do you have any idea what the envision is?
Well, one of them is, I'll, I'll just be upfront, it was kind of staff's recommendation is, I'm just going to bring up the aerial, because it'll be easier to show you. I don't know if you're fully aware what's going to be happening in this area. You know, there's an auto mall that's planned. I mean, most people, they've kind of announced that it's out there. This particular sign is existing, it's the Sienna Hills sign. They had, they were approved for a freeway sign, and that's what this is right here where my arrow is. This is right in the middle of the auto mall area, so they know they're going to have to take this sign down, move it somewhere. So I recommended that we bring it down here, even though it's not in the Sienna Hills development, but it is a sign, and it's probably actually going to be better for the freeway traffic to be seen down here where my arrow is.
Is, is that the property there?
This is the property right here.
And then it has that flag that goes up.
Right, but the flag, we're still determining how much of that's going to have to be part of Merritt Way. We think it might all there be, so, but if we tried to put it up in here, which they still own all of this, and if we can find a way, but they're still going to have to come back to you at a time, but we're just getting the zoning in place. The only two zones we allow for freeway signage and off-premise signage is in a C3 or an industrial zone property. So this just works out because my general plan allows for C3. It's fitting because of its location to be used, you know, to, for people to get off the, the interstate. Here, I'm just going to try to, instead of drag, I'm just going to zoom out a little bit, because you can see the off-ramp up here where my arrow is. And so, you know, freeway traffic is what that sign's made for. It's not made for just the people, you know, down here. So they'll be able to see it here where my arrow is and have plenty of time to react and, and get off. So, so this will be a two-part process. This is one of them, you know, but this is one of the main reasons. We want to relocate possibly that sign down here, and we have to be in a C3 zone to be able to do so. And then you'll determine for the off-premise. It, it meets all the kinds of criteria. You know, I don't have any other signs along I-15 here that would fall in place that would limit it, you know, but it'll be far enough away from the auto mall sign, you know, which is going to go roughly where this one is.
So the property to the south, isn't that where the, the city utilities or city yard is in there?
It's actually right here. This is the city yard right to the west.
Right there?
Yes. There's a water tank right here, there's a cell tower right where my arrow is. You approved a building, a new parks building right where I'm circling. This'll, this, this is not going anywhere. This is our parks.
Right, so it's just this little 1.8 acre just right there.
Right here, yep. And, and they could still use it for some other business, any commercial business that fits within the C, any of the C zones, because anything in a C3 includes C1, C2. So they could find some other use as well to put here that, you know, would fall into whatever permitted uses are, you know, on the rest of the property and still have room for the sign. So that's kind of full intent behind this. It's kind of a twofold purpose, just for the relocation of that sign because of the really kind of cool auto mall sign that's going to be coming. It's going to be a pretty incredible sign for the auto mall. And so we need a place to put this one. And that's probably out of all said and done, because the auto mall goes right up to this RV park and all the way over to the Black Bear Diner and the Culver's being built. That's all going to be auto mall. So they'll, they'll have quite the, you know, talked about sign right here for that, and then we just want to move this one and pop it in over here, so.
So only two signs for the auto mall. Is that correct?
Just one big one. This won't be for the auto mall. This is for the other businesses, for the Black Bear, the, for the Maverick, and whoever else in the Sienna Hills development wants to buy, you know, there's advertisement, if you've seen the sign, you know, there's vacant spaces to be, be added upon, so.
So Drew, if, if that little flag, anytime I see proposals with flags like that, I get a little sweaty back, just because they always seem to be problems five years later. Do we, do we know, so assuming that not all of that becomes part of Merritt Way, how do, how do we want to manage that?
Well, we've talked about that, what it could be, I mean, you know, if they meet all the criteria, that, that can be usable space. I mean, they own it, it's, you know, have, it has zoning to it. Now, again, I told them, your issues are going to be, you're not going to get any ground to the north, because that's the interstate, that's, you know, and that's what kind of drove this, is that actually Merritt Way was supposed to be, and it's been master planned as a, a frontage road. But we also realize that frontage road is 99% not going to happen, you know. I mean, that's just because of all the issues to the west. You have two trader parks that are in that, that design. If you don't know, I'll share you with, you know, just real quick, trader parks, if you move them and use eminent domain, which would be the only way you're going to get it, you have to. You have to replace all those people's homes and, and if it's a pre-seventy-six home, which you can't find, you know, nobody allows those anymore. You have to give them a new home. So it's costly. People don't relocate trader parks. Uh, it's just way too, it's, it's almost impossible to do and feasibly financially, it's. You just can't, you can't justify it. So knowing those problems are down the road. We've kind of realized that road probably won't happen. And would be going right through our, now if we do build it, it'll just go down to three hundred. And um, but we're going to plan for that. We're still not sure.
The challenge with the ninety-nine percent is if you look at your transportation master plan.
Oh, I know.
It's one hundred percent on there.
I know, and I've, I've raised that with the powers that be.
That's something, yeah, that's something that needs to probably be addressed because it's a hundred percent.
Do you have any more information on that? Have you talked with? I know it is every, I mean, I've been the one telling everybody, uh, you have a road right here. It's been on there since I've worked here, but. Yeah.
And, and the traffic studies tell us we need east-west traffic through there also, so, so the need exists. The plan shows it.
Yeah, so the road will go in, but that, that shows you where it's going to be. I think in fact. I was going to bring this up that that. From that white line you see there to the curb and gutter is the size of the road. So we're not, I thought it was, I thought it was designed that the road would go into that. No, you see the size of the road right there. It's already been given to that point, you know, we went and looked and researched that. That this distance from here to here is the width of the road, so that piece will remain in their ownership up there. And even with the road coming in, we're going to design where the sign goes to, to meet that.
What is the estimated width of that?
That road?
The, the, the flag parcel.
Oh, well, I think we've measured it out. I'm just gonna. We'll see what we get. This is just rough.
About four hay bales wide?
Thirty-two feet almost.
It's about right. Big hay bale, but that, those happen.
That's plus or minus. I think we, we came in, it was about thirty-two, thirty-two something, so. And I think they said, I think they said that sign isn't, isn't that wide, so we might be able to get it in there, you know, if they meet setback and. Or even if we have to give a little relief because we're not worried about any sight distance right there by any means. So I think we have things that we can work at, you know, with.
So that distance setbacks and such, you're not building anything vertically. But there may be surface use that's still allowed. Is that, is that kind of what it's at?
Kinda.
You should could put a sign on there.
So the, the flag lot that goes the other way, who owns that?
They own that. It's part of the piece that goes that direction.
The auto mall.
Yeah, you can see, I'll just show you how it ties. Actually, no, I think we own that. Yeah, there you go. Washington City owns that other piece right here. It's highlighted in blue. I think that just got given to us because it was easier whoever had it. This one stayed, stayed, what's that?
They ought to do the same thing.
Well, but at least they have, there's value in this of, you know, they own it and it can be calculated towards square footage.
We'll trade them a C three zoning for it.
You want more of that view property?
Drew, did you say the sign is being built around Merrill Way going through, being extended? Did I hear you say that right?
Which one? Well, we talked about that. We told them that the road is designed to come through, so they're going to have to either put it down here where my arrow is. You know, or we try to find some way that it can fit up in this.
Right there, okay.
Narrow area.
All right, I thought I heard you say that.
Drew, with that being said. Are they going to, would, would they be able to, what kind of sign is it that they're talking about, like a, a big?
You see it. That's the sign that's existing right now. They're moving it.
Are they going to want to put other signs? In that stretch area right there?
No, they won't be able to. You have to have distances from one sign to another, so.
Okay, that's, that's what.
One sign's going in.
I wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, you have one sign.
It's fine to put one there, but I don't want to.
Yeah, no, because.
A whole bunch of them, one right after the other.
The code reads, it's like fifteen hundred feet. You have, you have to have fifteen hundred feet.
Okay.
Minimum, and you're definitely going to have that from, you know, where my arrow is here and, and. I'm still dragging to bring you back into, you know, that auto mall one's going to be roughly, I think, right up where I'm circling right now.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't just going to have a bunch of them where that is useless property and it is a flag and.
Well, it's not like going through like Co Fort when you see all the billboards, you know, like that or right outside of Beaver.
Yeah.
We, our code doesn't allow for that.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to make sure of.
Yep, you have to be a minimum of fifteen hundred feet away at least and have the right zoning, so.
This Commissioner Tupoe, um, question. What, what is the size of the sign and um, is it lit?
Which one?
The sign that's being moved.
It is, I think, lit, but by panels internally. It's not like, you know, lights coming and hitting. You can drive by it. It's, it's there now and I, I think, I think at night that the panels can be lit, but I don't even know if they are right now. Is any?
Just because it's moving closer to a neighborhood, so.
I guess, I don't know why their rep isn't here. Where is Greg? I'm going to have to chew him out. He's a city councilman. He doesn't show up to a thing he put his name on. Greg, I just tugging at you, buddy, but. So anyway, that's, but you know, we do allow lighting on it, but they'd have to show that in when they move it, what, what it's going to be in, so.
I think they're fifty feet tall, but I don't know how big the sign is.
I think it's, I think that they said it's like twenty. Because you know, the area you see here is all landscaped and everything too, but just the, the base part of it, they said is twenty feet, so. If I've got thirty-two feet, most of my signs have to be six feet off of the property line. So this will fit basically just perfectly in that little, if that's where it ends up being. Um, even if they had to, you know, modify it or we gave them, you know, and I'm not worried about this, the distance on the north because it's. U dot property and there's nothing that's going to be built up there. It's just going to be, they'd leave it open for their. Space, so I wouldn't even mind if it went to a zero property line up there. We could push it off the road even more. It could be even ten feet off of the, the thing and still meet their twenty feet, so that's what I'm hoping for is that it might work out in there.
Commissioner Tupoe, I've just got a message from staff member that's saying the Sienna Hills sign is not a lit sign. That said, there is state billboard law that allows them to become lit sometimes. And so we can't necessarily guarantee they never become illuminated, but as it stands today, it's not illuminated.
But we can regulate candlelight daytime and nighttime. They, that same law that. You know, that, that I was just talking about does allow us nighttime candlelight, daytime candlelight, so.
So who, who looks at that? You guys, staff looks at that?
Yeah, I mean, in the state law, we pretty much follow that. I do have, for the ones that, that light up now that you see. They have to go to a certain candle, you know, and you know the ones that don't. You can drive by the Dixie Center right now on the freeway thing and that. You got to put your sunglasses on at night when you go by that, you know, and it just blurs out at you. Nowadays, those, those signs, you know, that brightness at night. Cities can regulate down on that and, and actually the sign companies are good. They come up with auto dimming. You know, in their electrical, it's really, they can set it by computer, the time that it lights up and goes down. I mean, it, the technology is much, much better anyway today. Even though that's not going to be a lit message board, the Sienna Hills one, because that's. It is what it is, but we could probably do some soft lighting on the back if they ever wanted to. I don't think we'd be offended by that.
Just like if it's, if it is moved to that flag lot, um, can we stipulate that it is closer to the freeway than in the middle of the flag lot?
We can. Yeah, we can work through all that stuff, so.
While you're thinking of additional questions, Commissioners, I'll open this up. It's a public hearing. Is there anybody here in the chamber that would like to speak to this item? I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
This Commissioner Tupoe, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
This Commissioner Bullock, I second.
Got a first and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed and any additional questions, Commissioners? If not, I'll look for a motion on item number six.
This Commissioner Anderson, I'll recommend. Uh, make a motion to. To recommend approval of Z dash twenty-two dash O two, a request to rezone. Approximately one point eight three acres located at the intersection of Merritt Way and Bluff View Drive. From the current service commercial C two zoning to a proposed general commercial C three zoning designation. With the two findings and send it to city council for consideration.
Does it go to city council?
This Commissioner Bullock, I'll second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson. I have a second by Commissioner Bullock. Individual voting on this item, Commissioner Sheel.
Aye.
Tupoe? Anderson?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
And I am Hanson, I'm an aye as well. Item number six, A passes. We'll send that to city council with our recommendation for approval. That is the last agenda item that we have this evening, Commissioners. Is there any? Or staff, is there anything that needs to be brought before this body at this time?
No, I can't think of anything, so. I know Commissioner Bullock won't be here next meeting, so is the other five going to be here? Okay. You'll be here next meeting? Okay, just so I know what we're, we can go with three even, but five's good, so you'll be voting next, next time, so, okay.
In the future, what is the best, uh, what would you like as far as, as, as long as we know ahead of time? Just let you know? Should we let you know? Should we let Melody know?
Yeah, let us know, but it's kind of nice in this meeting so we can ask and make sure, you know, it, it's good to know if someone else plans on being gone, we. It's not a, oh no, I hope we have enough because if I, you know, and I know emergencies will happen. It's not like, you know, you said you're going to be here and you need to show up, you know, on. With an ID in your arm and, you know, and. Stuff, don't, don't come if that's the case, but it just helps us because. I have in my career had three different times where didn't know and only had two. You know, whether commissioners or council members show up, we didn't know the other ones weren't going to and. You know, it just, it's hard because you can't have your meeting. If you don't have three, you got to have at least that. And then everybody has to vote. You know, for an item, but yeah, it's just, so if you aren't going to be gone, let us know and then we'll just make sure we'll have enough, so.
We have learned in the last six months, we've had two different council members show up to meetings with kidney stones. Just to be clear, you, you can miss all the meeting you need to miss for kidney stones.
We'll show up the kidney stone. It's brutal.
We'll guarantee you uh, the right to miss that meeting.
That's why I'm peeking right here. I would never show up with a kidney stone. Anyway, I look for a motion to close the meeting uh, this evening from the Commissioners.
This Sheel, I propose we close this uh, planning commission meeting tonight.
Second.
All right, all in favor of closing meeting?
Aye.
All right, meeting is closed. Thank you all again for attending.